Hey Bob.
I can hear us in the meeting.
Yes, I can hear you. I can hear you finally. That's good.
Hello. We can hear you too.
All right, good evening, everyone. It is 6:12 PM. I am calling the Special Laws and Rules Committee meeting to order on September 4th, 2025. In attendance, we have President Shaw, Alderwoman Terrell Mickens, filling in for Alderman Rennie Scott Childress. We have Alderwoman Jeannie Edwards, and we have Alderwoman Pasty. And on Zoom, we have Alderman Bob Dennison. So, we met last... Oh, yeah. You want to do that first? Okay, so we're gonna actually deviate for a second and go on our agenda. We have a handicap parking sign on West Pierpont Street that needs to be approved. I think she gave me... Is that one for... Yeah, this is public?
But it's laws and rules still. We talked about it, but then I said it still has the pass. So I'll go get a laws and rules committee report.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. One second. So this will be a handicap sign that will be installed on West Pierpont Street. We just need an updated committee report. Want to do it? You want to do it? Just, okay. Or just, I can do it. I'm sorry. Okay. I did, I thought we don't put them in there.
Oh.
Oh, okay. Seventy-four. Okay, so this is a resolution of the Common Council to add handicap signage at 74 West Pierpont Street. Can I get a motion? And a second? Jeannie. So, motion by Terrell Mickens, second by Jeannie Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Anyone opposed? No, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. All right, so, um... To begin, I put together some spreadsheets of the buildings and units that were reporting vacancies. So... Just want to say that the first building, Dutch Village, my notes say vacancies doubled and then tripled once the vacancy study began. In addition, several were held open since beginning of year before 2025. The longest vacancy out of any unit was at most two months. There are also a few units with illegal rent increases in the rent rolls. But I also want to mention that the month of September 2024 was missing. So, I think that two-month span of, um, before 2025, like, needs to be checked. Seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty-three, Green Street. This one did not provide rent rolls because too much was coming and going, and reported eleven evictions for the year. And this had a overall vacancy rate of seven. So I would, um... This is a building that I would like to speak to the landlord and just see what's going on there. Then we have 137 St. James. Is two units, though three are marked vacant on the form that was filled out. But I'm not sure, like, if one was being renovated, but unsure which one of the three. They didn't provide past rent rolls, but said they hadn't changed in two to three years, except that one opened in January and one opened in February. BarTech might have passed records separately somewhere or didn't include it, so we can ask BarTech about that. Then we're moving on to 87, 89, Green. They told BarTech, sure. Yeah, we, I can, okay. I'll put us all on anything, because then you guys might have more that you want to add to it. They told Bar, so this is 87, 89. They reported that the rent rolls hadn't been changed in the last two to three years, with the exception of two units that opened in winter, probably referring to 137 St. James, because that lists three vacancies between two properties. So I think that's also a clarification point. We should ask BarTech. Fifty-eight St. James, there's only three vacancies reported by the landlord, but BarTech's report, reported four. So that's a discrepancy that we'll have to check with BarTech. Ninety Fair Street specifically cites the difference between what they are charging and what they would charge if not for rent stabilization consistently $300 more. One Broadway, 303, was available at beginning of March. 306 was available at the end. So that's confusing.
I thought we heard this, it was just Dave.
Yeah. They haven't been speaking yet.
But thank you, Janet.
So on, on the recorded meeting with the landlords, there is a part where BarTech did, some of the landlords were confused as to the timing of the study. And he did say, "Just consider the whole month." The whole month, not just the date of March 27th. So I feel like that needs clarification. Fifty-five, fifty-seven, just as I'd noticed that there was an illegal rent increase on one unit, 726 to 1371. 121 Green Street. No specific unit cited may be missing the document, so that's another question for BarTech. And then 84 Wilbur Street, no rent rolls were included. So that's what I have. I don't know if anybody had anything to add. Going through the data, if anyone?
I don't have anything to add. I think you did a really comprehensive job of breaking down. Oh, sorry. I think you did a really comprehensive job of going through all the numbers.
Okay, thank you, Terrell.
Yes, I also don't have anything to add. So thank you for going through all of that for us.
Okay, thank you.
Can we, especially without, with a bunch of missing members, can, do you mind putting those questions that you have, that you came up with, BarTech, sending them to us? And in that way, after everybody looks at the data, if there are other further questions that we could add them in, maybe like early next week, send them to him?
I want to ask Bob, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't have anything to add. Thank you for asking.
Okay, thank you. Were you able to look at the spreadsheets that I sent?
Yes, I did look at them.
Okay, thank you.
Again, thanks for getting that together. Makes it easier when it's all in one place.
So we were thinking that the next meeting would be to formulate questions, right?
Do you want me to jump? All right, so Michelle and I have, as of last laws and rules meeting, we said that we were going to team up and, and work through the process of what we're gonna, how we're going to go through the legislative findings. So we had a nice conversation and have a, I think, a good plan moving forward that it's the same as we talked about at the laws and rules meeting. I, I don't know if all you were there. All right, so I don't, do you want me to repeat it? All right, so the first idea, or the first thing that we'll do, and we were calling them charrettes, although they're not really charrettes, so we'll have to come up with a better name, is to do one where we invite landlords to have, so that we could ask them questions, to do another one, so we have the tenants, so we could ask them questions. Also, at the time landlords could bring any thoughts to us, tenants could bring any thoughts to us. I also have, and I'll pass this out now, I came up with a set of questions as a starting point. This does not need to be end-all, be-all, and I would love to have any more, any more feedback from you guys. And I'll email this to the full council. I haven't done that yet. So Bob, I'll send this to everyone at some point in the next few days. Because, you know, as much as I would love all landlords to come to us and have these conversations, obviously that's not going to be possible for, because of schedules if we're doing one meeting. So I think Michelle and I talked about also sending out something, whether they could fill out the same questions, or fill out the answers to the same questions. So we would just want to figure out, first of all, what other questions we want. And then, you know, also keep in mind the questions that would be asking tenants. I only have the landlords, because that's the one that we would start with. So I just haven't gotten to the tenants one. So we would also be doing that, but also figuring out the timeframe of, okay, if we're going to send this out, invite folks, but also give them time to respond in writing, if that's how they would prefer, or that's the only way that they're able to respond. So that's kind of what Michelle and I talked about today, what we would figure out in terms of what you guys want, like, how much time you want to come up with questions, how much time you think that would be fair. We were thinking the third to fourth week of October. It gives folks time to get this together. Well, everything that I said, it gives us time to do that. And also thinking budget season starts in November too, so we're gonna have to kind of do a little straddle. So that's our thoughts. I don't know if anybody has any questions or any concerns or any other ideas based on those thoughts.
Just a question, you mean that the third or fourth week of October would be when these responses were due and when the meetings would be held? Right, okay. And then following that, there would be a public here, a public hearing that would, you know, that process, the public process would follow in November?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get the understanding of the full.
I mean, I have to do the budget.
Right.
Season first, and we'll have to work around that, because that, we have like, you know, it's...
It's very...
Yeah, we have very little time to do a lot of work, and, and we have that looming deadline.
Yes.
So once I figure that out, I think the tenant meeting after the land, like, those, those could be close. As long as we start coming up with the tenant questions as well, we could start, we don't have to have like, you know, six weeks between the two. And then we're gonna do two public hearings, the statutory public hearing, and then, and then a Saturday.
Saturday morning.
Yeah, public hearing outside of City Hall. That, those, we talked about those being the same week, so like a Tuesday and a Saturday. But we would want a little time between the two... Yeah, the two meetings versus the two hearings, so that we could all, you know, wrap our heads around the answers that we're getting. And then also, everybody who comes to speak to us, if they're at, you know, if it's a landlord who comes to the tenant meeting, they'll also have time to prepare and vice versa.
Okay.
For the public hearings.
So how do we, um... Make sure that the meetings are not being like cross-pollinated? In other words, like, can a landlord go to a tenant's meeting and a tenant meeting, a tenant go to a landlord's meeting? How do we put, um, or do we want to put? I would think we would want to sort of have them separate, but how do we do that?
Well, I don't think we can exclude anyone from coming, I mean...
We, we could, because it's a, it's not a public hearing. This is a meeting that we're setting, that we're inviting. I mean, I could talk to Barbara, she's listening, so she might disagree with me. But I think that we could actually do that, because it's not public comment or public hearing where it's open to everybody. This is a meeting that we're inviting folks to the table.
But we, I just want to make sure, because in the event that we would have to turn someone away, would we turn someone away, like, if the landlord came to a tenant meeting? Do we have the...
We could. I don't know if we would want to.
How would they identify themselves? I mean, how do you identify yourself as a tenant, as opposed to how do you...
Well, we'll be asking questions. So could somebody come and pose as a tenant? Yeah, I mean, but we'll be asking specific questions to, about land, being a landlord, and specific questions about being a tenant. So I think, I mean, hopefully people won't be that naughty and do that. I guess I'm unicorns and rainbow optimism over here, that think that people will, you know, go along with this. If, if anybody has an issue with the date, you know, so if a landlord can't make October 31st, I won't do it, October 31st, then, then we could, either they could answer that here or we could coordinate something else, you know, being flexible. But I think the idea would be to have the two on separate days to keep things organized. Do you agree?
I, I like that idea too. Terrell actually got it before I did. I think it's important that we both, hear from both sides, especially because we do, not taking a side, but we do have a good, a lot of good landlords, also in the city of Kingston, that feel like they're being crucified at this moment. So I think it's really important that we do divide them, so we could get the clarity on both the tenants and the landlords.
All right, so you, you're agreeing with the...
I'm saying she got to it before me. I just, I'm just, you know, saying I agree with that.
Yeah, I think that's the only way to move forward, is to make sure.
And it's transparency for, on our side, that we get to see and hear both sides.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree also.
So I guess, how, in terms of scheduling, how much time do you want to be able to go through the data that Michelle gathered and then go through these questions and come up with your own? Are you good with, maybe I come up with the third or fourth week of October? Michelle and I get some dates with that and send them? We would want the questions a lot sooner, because we would have to print them up, send them out, and do all of that. So maybe by the...
The end of the month?
I was gonna say the end of next week.
Okay, yeah, because we don't want to drag this on any longer than two.
And we want to give everybody a fair chance of...
Okay, end of next week is fine.
Getting this done. Both of us, probably, right? It's a team effort here. I will.
And I, I will copy everyone on the email. I'll send it. I won't have time to do it over the weekend, but like my Monday, like.
And that's okay?
Yeah.
Because people will think I'm saying something that's important, when I'm not. And that's fine, because we don't need those answers by the twelve. So we don't, we just need those by the time we have the landlord meeting, basically.
I'm not on laws and rules, but it's all right if I send questions, because, yeah.
Please do, please.
Okay, does anyone have any further questions or need any further clarification on anything or want to share anything?
I just have a question, and maybe this is not the right forum to bring it up, but it was just a question of how the sampling of units was selected? Is that a question that BarTech answered at one point? I think he did.
He did talk about it during the meeting. Were you, you were there, right? It was just, it was a lot of information.
There's a lot of information, so I'm, yes, I forget, but it's page, okay. In the study, okay.
Yeah, and he did talk about it, but if you want clarification, definitely reach out to him, because I can't give it to you.
Okay. Okay, and it's not pertinent to the data necessarily, just.
Actually, page thirteen.
Page thirteen, thank you. In case anyone is, is wondering, page thirteen has indication of how these units were selected.
You know, how the sampling. That's the explanation of the sampling. Page thing.
Thank you.
I did have a question. I'm sorry, I did have a question having to do with, let's see. I'm sorry, I'm not very good with this. I left my mouse home. Having to do with the fines that, here it is, okay. Owners were notified that the city is authorized to impose, to impose civil penalties if an owner chooses not to cooperate with the municipality or submits knowingly false information to a survey response. And then I, I was interested in what that civil penalty looked like and would it provide a disincentive to, for the landlord not to reply? And I see where it's only $500 per landlord. Not per unit. And so I'm wondering how we came up with that $500? That would be a question.
That was, and, and it's in the state law. And this is actually Senator Hinchey's piece that was added, I think, in twenty-twenty-three to, that they passed in Albany into the ETPA.
This doesn't seem to demand a a response.
I, I think it worked this time. All of the landlords actually responded, where we had lower.
But it says knowingly false information in a survey response. So even though they responded, is there the possibility that knowingly or unknowingly, their responses weren't correct?
I mean, that is our job right now, as legislative findings. I mean, part of the job, like figuring out if we're going to be accepting the study. And so that would be some of the, you know, come up with questions that could help you get to that answer.
I was just surprised.
I mean, if it's unknowingly false, if it was a mistake, then we should know that, too, but that, that wouldn't be a penalty.
Right, exactly. But $500 is not a lot of money.
Can we get, can we get something? And I'm not sure if I'm out of line here. Can we get something from the building department to see if the registrations from the landlords are all like up to date and they all are registered? Can we get some kind of stat on that?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I was thinking about that as well, because that would also have information about.
How many apartments, inspections and everything of that sort.
So just.
Yeah.
And I was also curious about landlord data, just to see how many new units may have been added in the city overall since the last study, like new units. So like the mayor spoke about there being much more short-term, less, fewer short-term rentals on the market, so, and that some of them may have been turned into rental units. So if those are in fact rental units, there would be a landlord registration for them. So I would be interested in seeing.
So is that a question that you can ask of the building department? Okay, great.
Is that something we have to go through the mayor or? Okay. That was a good question, thank you, Jeannie. Professor, see? Yeah, because I was asking BarTech the last time we met about like the net absorption rate for the whole city and what's come online, what's gone offline and where we're at. So that does tie into that.
Also wondering if there would be any way to sort of correlate Kingston City School, like registrations of children? Because I, what I understand, what I see is that there are less children going to school and like we've lost some population. And so I'm, I'm, I know that there must be a correlation between vacancies and loss of population.
But with the population, I mean, we would have to go with this, with the census. I mean, there's no other way that that we could do. But also, I know, but there's no other method that I could think of. I mean, following how many kids? There's also less.
The school district would know.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying like, there are more people who don't have kids. So that could also be, you know, part of the, there's just a lot of like, I just don't think we would be able to figure out a correlation.
In other words, for maybe grades one and up? Because those are the kids that have been in that school? So they, the, the school district would know that we're missing these number of students and how, how much.
But how would they know why we're missing those number of students? Whether they come from homeowners who just don't have any kids or renters? Or how would they be able to determine that? I don't know if they, do they, if they know the status.
People maybe having less kids, instead of having four, like my parents did. They might be more seen and have only two or one.
I'm not talking about like new, new kids to us, to the school system. I'm talking about the kids that have, have gone there.
Oh, you mean previous, previous kids who are no longer there?
Exactly.
But then we don't know if the, if people moved or?
Well, we know that their kids are not going to those schools, this Kingston City School District. Like in other words, if, if we could determine that this Kingston City School District lost, I don't know, 500 students from, from last year to this year, that could, that would be an indication of loss of population.
I think that would be a lot of work for a, we think that this might be the answer. I don't think it does, because it won't give us a concrete answer to the, what the population would be. So I don't know if it's.
I think it would be an indication of people vacating premises. Like they, they're no longer in the school district, they are no longer perhaps renting.
It could be at the hotels.
Yes, yes, but then the school, but they would still be.
Yeah, so I will say that the school district, this, the state ed has report cards for every district, which lists the enrollments, so.
So that would be interesting, is all I'm saying. It wouldn't be conclusive, but it would be interesting.
You want to get it?
I will.
Yes. Yeah, we could also reach out to their McKinney Vento coordinator, who, they will have numbers of, you know, students and families in, in emergency shelters. Look at those numbers as well.
Hi, Michael. We, yeah, I was just going to fill you in a little bit here, if you, because that way, in case you have any questions. Or were you listening?
No, no, I was at a previously scheduled work commitment, so I haven't even been able to be listening along, so.
Alright, so I mean, it's a lot, I know you were at the last laws and rules meeting, so it's, Michelle and I coordinated together before this meeting to move forward. She has all of, Michelle put together all the data that you have. I'll give you another sheet that I came up with. The idea is we'll do the meetings end of October, most likely. And then, so we're asked, I'm asking for everybody to get Michelle and I some questions that you want to have.
Yeah, and please feel free to cut me off if these have already been, been asked, but the, how landlord, how the, the survey respondents defined vacancy, I think is, is pretty critical. I mean, that would be incumbent on their public comment to share.
We didn't actually even come up with questions yet, so the, I, can you pass this down? So I, I came up with some, just to kind of get the ball rolling and pass that to everybody. So the idea is read through that, come up with questions, gather them by the twelfth, which is next Friday. And then Michelle and I will, will work out getting them out to landlord, because the idea is we'll send them, we'll invite landlords to come speak with us. But we'll also send them in the mail, these questions, that way in case they can't make the meeting. And then, of course, we'll do the same with the tenants. We'll keep everything balanced as fair as possible.
Okay, but we also do need to have a public hearing, right?
Yep, we're going to do these and then we'll do two public hearings with time in between for everybody to wrap their head around all the information that we'll be getting.
Okay, thank you.
Should we also be sending you potential questions for tenants by the twelfth?
You, you could start sending those if you would like. I don't think it's as time-sensitive, but, because it will be the second meeting, but.
Got it, okay.
Maybe we'll make the next week the deadline for tenants?
Okay. Okay, here we go. We went through the one sheet with just like my different observations and some of those, I will have to, I'm going to put an email together for BarTech, but I'll send it to all of us first. And if you have anything you would like to add as well from this. And that'll, that'll be in the beginning of next week. Okay, anything else? I just want to say thank you to everybody. I know it's going to take a little extra time outside of our regular schedule. And as Andrea said, we're also moving into budget season, so it's very busy. We'll be busy and, but we're, we're going to do a good, transparent job of this and make sure that everyone is heard. Okay? Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn, Jeannie? Terrell? All in favor? Okay. Adjourned at six forty-five.